Good afternoon and welcome to the March meeting of the Murfreesboro Historic Zoning Commission. We do have a quorum so we can conduct our business today. You all should have received in your packet the mini novella that you might find in a grocery store that represents our minutes from the last meeting. So if there are any comments or necessary edits to that, I would welcome hearing that.
Mr. Chairman, I believe I have one edit on page 13. The last paragraph about in the middle, it starts off with saying, he said, "The pictures in the agenda package showed the windows stating some of the windows haven't been closed in years," and I think that's probably open in years.
That would be correct.
I hope they got a close.
It's so worn out by then, David.
Yeah. Anything else from the commission? If not, the chair would welcome a motion to accept the minutes with the changes noted.
Still moved?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those pose. It passes then. Thank you very much. Joe, what is our first business today?
The first item and only item on the agenda is for the property at 550 East Main Street. The property is located on the south side of East Main Street at the corner of East Main Street and South University Street. The house was constructed circa 1895 in the Queen Anne Colonial Revival style of architecture with a classical porch, barge boards, decorative shingles, clapboard with a gabled roof. The house is a contributing structure in the East Main Street Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. Today, the property owner is requesting three extensive renovations to the property, to the exterior of the home, which include the following. The first item is that they would like to demolish the existing detached garage and construct a new detached two-car garage with attic storage space above. The siding of that garage will be wood that will match the home, and it will also have fish scale with decorative shingles to match the house. The second item that they would like to do is remove the existing sunroom windows and replace that space with three wood or wood composite windows to match the existing windows of the home and to match the siding of the house. And then the third item is to add a screened sunroom along the west side of the home where the existing porch is located and extend that sunroom length to 26 feet. I have included photographs into the agenda packet that I'll go over with you. The first picture on the screen here shows the front of the home along East Main Street. And here we have the two neighboring properties. The one on the top is along South University Street, and the one below it is on East Main Street. And here's a view of the side of the home along South University Street. The two photos here show the existing detached garage. Here we have two photos of the existing sunroom of the house. And then here is on the other side of the home where the porch is located, but they would like to convert that to the sunroom. And here we have the architectural plans that were submitted by the applicant representative, who is actually in the audience now, and I would like to invite them to the lectern to discuss in further detail what they are planning on doing.
If you would state your name and address, that would be great.
Steve James with Jameson Associates Residential Designers, and I'm here representing Kenstone on the renovation and remodel on Main Street. Be glad to try to answer any questions I can for you as much as possible. There's an extensive amount of interior remodeling going on at the time, and that's causing some of the stuff that you're seeing outside. The existing sunroom, a lot of that's been changed to bathroom, closets, and a smaller sitting area. And that's why we're replacing a lot of those windows.
What I'd like to do with the commission's approval is to separate these three items as separate cases that we would ask you then, Steve, questions about and this kind of thing and have you answer, then we would vote on them and then go back to the next item, if that's okay. Why don't we proceed forward then with the garage?
Okay.
Describe that.
The garage, if you notice existing photographs, it's not a matter of demolition of the garage. It's gonna fall down, period. It's in bad shape. Termites have damaged quite a bit of it, and it's, I don't know what's holding it up at this point. So it's basically just taking that existing structure down and renovating, not renovating, but redoing a new garage in place. We're going with a two-car garage, which will encompass not only the side, that drive-through or the covered part of the existing garage, but it will have a two-car garage in place. We're doing a storage above, no living area, just storage. It is accessible stairway. And we're matching the details of the house with what's existing. And again, there's a drainage problem. We're gonna address that with this garage when they rebuild it.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
There's a drainage problem. Now, all the drive is actually dumping all the water into the existing garage. So as we renovate the garage, we're bringing that level up and trying to reroute that water.
Okay. Could you describe for us the materials that you're planning to use? I'm looking at drawing two of four primarily.
Okay. We're matching everything that's from the house, the cedar shakes, the existing cedar shakes, we're gonna match those, the fish scale, the horizontal and the vertical siding is original, it is wood siding, and we're going back with original wood siding on that.
Will it be the same exposure, the clapboards?
As close as we can possibly get it to, you know, manufactured.
It probably varies on the house, anyway. What is the, in the gable ends, what is that large, that's not area that's not rendered? Is it a stucco-like finish? What is that?
Which, which one are you referring to, the south elevation?
Any of the four gable ends, there's nothing telling.
Again, it's a note that indicates that we're matching, there's a note deciding to match the house. If the, there's a photograph of right above that.
Is it flush siding?
This is a larger view of the photograph you have. And it's horizontal, I think it's horizontal and vertical siding.
But it's not overlapping?
No.
It's what I would call, I call it flush.
It looks like a beadboard sort of application.
But it's completely flat as if it's stucco, but it's wood.
No, it's, it's actually got, I'd be glad, if you look at this.
If you could bring that forward, because I visited the house earlier, and I don't remember that.
We can't really tell.
Yeah.
Oh, it's beadboard that's just vertical and it's painted. And so it's been painted so many times, the bead's pretty much gone. Okay, but it's beadboard, okay. And that'll be a wood material as well?
Yes.
We don't have any cut sheets for the windows and doors. Do you, can you tell us about these? What are they made out of?
As far as the windows of the garage?
Yes.
They were gonna match as close as we can to the original window, either a wood window or a composite. We haven't done any selection as far as the windows go. It'll probably be a Marvin or a Helita window.
But is it, but it is a wood window?
It is a wood window.
Is it single pane, double pane?
On the garage, we'll probably use a double pane. I mean, that's pretty standard.
And then I noted that the garage doors themselves will be specified by the owner in a note. What does that mean? I mean, and I think you have two views of it.
Garage doors are pretty much a selection process. We're, you know, we're gonna try to get something as close as what we have represented.
Well, the problem is, is you have two things represented. In the drawing, three of four, it's rendered, well, maybe it's the same, but it looks different. Maybe it's just the colorization than it is of two of four. They're meant to look like a pair of doors, right? Like carriage doors?
Yeah, that's similar to a carriage. Now, again, again, it's just a color. The two of four is just a black and white drawing, and the other one, one had colored rendering, so we just applied some color.
I would say to you and to the audience out there, and to Joe and everybody else, we normally require cut sheets of windows and doors to review to make sure it's something that we like on that. So that would be helpful. Anything else that the commission would like to ask?
Well, as far as the garage doors are concerned, you're planning on wood doors, right? You know, for the, where the actual autos will be housed?
I prefer not to use a wood door, but I mean, I'm sure we'll have to, so we'll do a wood door, just for the maintenance issue alone.
These are not so big. They're single-car doors. They won't start to sag like some wooden doors would. So that's, I think wood would be preferred. It's just higher maintenance, for sure. What is that trellis-like design over the door, garage door that sticks out furthest? Was it made out of wood?
Yes.
What questions does the commission have? Y'all are being quiet. I can't get over it.
They're just glad to get rid of the old garage.
It's pretty bad. It's pretty bad. If there are no other questions, the chair would welcome a motion toward the garage.
I'll make a motion that we approve the garage as submitted.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Well, we haven't determined the garage doors yet, so we don't have a specific design for the doors. So how do we address that?
I think if we could get a submittal sent to Joe, we could distribute it for final approval, if that's acceptable. I guess the doors and the windows, it's just in place.
Again, like I say, it's just basically a selection process. So, you know, get something as close as we can that's manufactured.
Is that acceptable to the city?
I believe the applicant I was talking to as well, he said that they will match what's actually on the rendered here, that the only thing that they were gonna pick is the different colors. They didn't want to be stuck on the color that they were showing here.
We don't approve colors, anyway, so it doesn't really matter.
He was just saying that the doors are gonna look exactly what they are right here.
There's two different drawings of the doors.
I don't see those.
Or depiction. It's a colored depiction.
It's a colored rendering on page three of four, Linda. It's to the left of the house?
Right here.
The clapboards on the bottom.
I think it's a color thing that makes it look different. There is one question I had, and I should have asked it before we started going into this. The south elevation, does that have a fence in front of it? It's a long exposure with no break in the siding. Is there a fence hiding, and that's why that side is not highlighted? I mean, architecturally detailed?
Again, it's the rear of the property, and we didn't show any detail back there.
But is, but the question is, is there a fence immediately next to it?
There is a fence, yeah.
So it hides basically that side? Okay. We have a motion and a second with the understanding that you'll submit those items to the city, and the city will distribute to us, and we'll get back as soon as possible to you.
The owner's actually flying, he's a pilot, so as soon as he gets back, we'll get him to make a choice.
Okay. We have a motion and a second with some discussion there. All those in favor then of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those pose. Why don't we do the screen porch change, and then we'll come back to the stairs and other improvements? This would be page four of four. If you could describe that?
Again, the screen porch, and this was changed two days prior to the submittal date. It was increased the size somewhat. There's an existing pergola there. We're gonna take that down and deck and rebuild with a new floor system, brick around the bottom, and then the screened area around the side. It is screened, not sunroom, which it stated earlier. It's just a screen porch. And the existing window that's in the house now will be changed to a door to enter from the kitchen area into the sunroom. I mean, you got me saying it now, screen porch.
Sorry, sorry. I noticed that you're using that pierced brick foundation detail, which is a nice detail for the foundation in expressing the piers. That's very good-looking.
Again, this matches exactly what's on the front of the house.
The one thing I noted in the screen porch, west elevation, is you've got a half-round, is it a half-round column pilaster facing us in this view on each end?
Yes, and it's, we've used that before on some, on Main Street.
But it's only on that one elevation? It's not a three-quarter column, it's a half-column? Did you all consider that every other column or every other space would be a column, half-round column, instead of just the ends?
No, not really. It was, again, cost is involved, so, you know.
I just thought it would break up that mass and look like the front porch more so. If it, every other post were a half-round column, it would look like the front porch. And you're using what I would call a silhouette baluster? It's a flat board cut to look like a baluster, and they're just butted side by side by side?
Yeah.
I had a question, Chairman, about what is, what is this railing-looking depiction that's on the outside, I think, of the screened-in porch? That would be the west elevation?
Yes, it's just the railing at the lower portion of the porch. It's on the outside.
So it's, it is like a, I don't understand what it is.
Again, it's very similar to the photograph just right beside that, where we're showing the rail, the screens behind it.
Okay, yes.
There is a specific photograph of a silhouette baluster. Look on page three of four in the lower left-hand corner. That's what the silhouette baluster looks like. A small little photograph?
Okay.
It does appear in your rendering that there is an external frame, and about silhouette balisters, the boards are on the inside face, not the outside face. Is that the case?
It's on the, they are on the outside, yeah.
They, the silhouette balisters are on the outside?
Yes.
Because the drawing looks like the framework is on the outside itself. And what, what type of insect screening are you using?
Oh, again, I didn't hear you.
Insect scrims, I was looking down.
Screen.
The insect screening itself.
Love to use fiberglass if possible. I've got an example. We've used the metal screens on other projects on Main Street and had terrible results with it. Hard to stretch, it rips, it's just very wavy looking. I've got a photograph of a project we did to give you an example of that, if you want to see it. So we, you know, I'd love to use a fiberglass screen if possible, because we can stretch it. We get various colors and whatever we need to do.
Well, I found the fiberglass also rips pretty easily, too.
According to the builders I've talked to, they, all of them prefer the fiberglass over this, because we can't stretch the steel.
What color would it be?
Again, we'll get as close to the colors, what we can match is...
A gray or a black?
Gray, yeah, black, something like that, yeah. And again, I do have a photograph of a project we did on Main Street with the, giving an idea of what it looks like.
Pat, you can bring the photographs to us. Sure. So it's four feet longer, it's about the same depth. You're converting a window into a door. What will that door look like?
We were talking about that yesterday. We're trying to find a door. It's just, nothing in the house is suitable.
I'm afraid without these cut sheets, this leaves us in an awkward position as far as review and approval. That's, that's the difficult thing. I'd hate for you, us to give you approval, and then you can't find a door that you like and that we like, and then...
Well, with this bill's the contract on the project, we had talked about that yesterday, out there, looking for some type of door. We're looking for a three-quarter, a half-class or something that matches with existing houses, but there's nothing there.
The, it appears that you've got in that rendering, two vertical panels below a half-class. This is on page four.
Yeah, we left it open, you know, basically half-class or three-quarter glass, something. It's similar to what we're looking for, trying to do.
And the silhouette baluster will match exactly the one on page three?
Yes.
What other questions does the commission have?
Steve, I was just curious, what kind of material, material you're gonna use on the flat roof?
Yes, right now, we're talking about using a rubber roof on it, EPDM-type rubber roof. Which will only be visible from the interior of the house, basically.
And I assume you'll have gutters and downspouts on it? Gutters and downspouts? What other questions do we have?
I don't know.
If not, then the chair would welcome a motion regarding this addition.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve it, but we need a submittal of that window that you don't know what, the door, I'm sorry, that you don't know what you're gonna use at this point. We submit it the same way to Mr. Analyst.
If it's on the screen, it's doubtless be visible, visible, but, you know, when we get something, we'll submit it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion to accept this as design with the door being submitted later, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those pose? If not, then it passes. Let's now go into, it just seemed like there were quite a bit of changes related to the, what was the former, I guess, sleeping porch that had a bank of windows on the second floor, was open air below with a lot of lattice. There's an adjoining high deck over a one-story entry cover to the first one, I don't know how you want to describe that, into the rear of the building. Could you discuss that for us? It shows up somewhat on page one of four with the garage, and then also on three of four.
The part on one of four, that's dealing with the screen porch.
But it has the stairs, I think you're changing.
The stairs?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the site plan.
It's with the screen porch.
By code, again, we have the existing site plan attached in this packet, and we've got the new site plan. By code, we have to be five feet from the property line. The existing garage is on the property line. So when we adjust the new building of the garage, we're gonna have to move it five feet off the property line. And to do that, we're gonna have to remove part of the existing deck, just because we have to be five feet from the existing structure. So we're rearranging the back of the deck, taking one section off to give us that five-foot clearance around the house. And then, as far as the second floor addition, we're in the existing sunroom. On sheet three, you can see it, the renovated sunroom area, we've extensively redone the bathroom, added a large walk-in closet, and used the remainder of that sunroom as a small sitting area off the master bedroom. And the house now has existing windows, the continuous all the way around. They're not spaced equally. The header height's different on each window, and the interior look is pretty awesome. So we're trying to get back and get the header heights and redoing the ceiling in that section too, to get the windows all the same height. And again, the location of the bathroom, we're just trying to locate the windows. We couldn't get the continuous bank of windows again. So we're adding the two, three on the end of the house on University Street, and then we're adding one more in that room to get some light in that new sitting area. And then we're adding one smaller or another bath, window in the bathroom area to get light in that bathroom.
On the short end, facing the side streets, you're going from four windows to three windows, and then on the side, I can't count how many are there, the rear, I should say. I know one of those windows was a door to get out to that small deck off that rear room off the L. That's now a window, so there's no door now to go from that sleeping, what was a former sleeping porch.
That existing door is now where the new tub is in the bathroom.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand you.
The, that window that Jim's referring to, in the bathroom, we're adding the tub area. It's actually a tub shower area, and that's where that door, existing door is. So we're removing that door completely. It was one of the things the owner wanted, was this stand-in shower, tub shower combination, all tiled in one room. So that took a lot of space, and that eliminated that door.
It appears, if we just keep with that two-story, what was it, a two-story porch historically, I'm assuming? And the top part we're talking about now was a sleeping porch. There's a railing below. Is that being changed out to the silhouette baluster as well?
He's actually adding the, you're talking about the open porch below that?
Yes, it's got...
He's actually adding those plantation shutters, and there's a photograph involving those, what he wanted to use. Some of the hinged shutters actually fold out from the bottom, replacing all the lattice and everything down there with those.
With the lattice, it's gonna be a silhouette baluster to match like the sun porch?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's consistent. This is the first time I'm aware of any shutters that are hinged from the top in our district. I would call those, instead of plantation shutters, like Bermuda shutters or whatever island, I'm sorry, I don't get around the islands that much, but some island, they're known for their shutters hinged at the top. This would be our first. Did you all consider doing them in the traditional fashion?
We did, the owner didn't.
He's a pilot, so he sees more places than we do.
He specifically gave us the photograph that he wanted those to look like, so that was what we were trying to design with. And we had original shutters, we had a dug the design scheme originally, but went back to what he wanted.
Unless the board wants to ask questions now, it's gonna get description of the improvements there over that upper deck and lower entrance, and then the stair coming down to the rear door on the L. Could you describe that? Looks like it's basically the same thing, you're just changing out the railing.
Changes out the rail, that's about it.
That's all you're doing?
And again, we're doing that just to match consistency throughout.
Okay. What questions does the commission have?
Okay, this, I'm a little confused on this. Steve, so the shutters, they're hung from the top. Are they on the second floor?
They're actually on the first floor. room off the L, that's now a window, so there's no door now to go from that sleeping, what was a former sleeping porch?
That, that existing door is now where the new tub is in the bathroom.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand you.
The, that window that Jim's referring to, in the bathroom, we're adding the tub area, it's actually a tub shower area, and that's where that door, existing door is, so we're removing that door completely. It's one of the things the owner wanted, was a stand-in shower, tub shower combination, all tiled in one room, so that took a lot of space, and that eliminated that door.
It appears, if we just keep with that two-story, what was it, a two-story porch historically, I'm assuming? And the top part we're talking about now was a sleeping porch, there's a railing below, is that being changed out to the silhouette baluster as well?
He's actually adding the, you're talking about the open porch below that?
Yes, it's got...
He's actually adding those plantation shutters, and there's a photograph involving those, what he wanted to use, some, the hinged shutters actually fold out from the bottom, replacing all the lattice and everything down there with those.
But the lattice is gonna be a silhouette baluster to match like the sun porch?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's consistent? This is the first time I'm aware of any shutters that are hinged from the top in our district. I would call those instead of plantation shutters, like Bermuda shutters or whatever island, I'm sorry, I don't get around the islands that much, but some island, they're known for their shutters hinged at the top.
More of a...
This is their first. Did y'all consider doing them in the traditional fashion?
We did, the owner didn't.
He's a pilot, so he sees more places than we do.
He, he specifically gave us the photograph that he wanted those to look like, so that was what we were trying to design with, and we had original shutters, we had a other design scheme originally, but went back to what he wanted.
Describe, unless the board wants to ask questions now, it's gonna get description of the improvements there over that upper deck and lower entrance, and then the stair coming down to the rear door on the L, could you describe that? Looks like it's basically the same thing, you're just changing out the railing.
Changes out the railing, that's about it.
That's all you're doing?
And again, we're doing that just to match consistency throughout.
What questions does the commission have?
Okay, this, I'm a little confused on this, Steve, so the shutters that are hung from the top, are they on the second floor?
First floor. They're actually on the first floor.
They're just shutters that enclose the porch, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
Close the open-air porch?
The open porch, yeah. And so are they solid? Can you see through them? What...
They're louvered.
Louvered, okay.
It also, it also surrounds where that stair goes up to the side of the L.
Are they louvers that are movable, or are they fixed?
Yeah, it looks like this is two, two panels.
So that's a shutter, that's a shutter, then all of those...
And in the drawing, you show them as being black, is that...
Excuse me?
They look black in the drawing on page three? Or I'm just misreading the picture?
Again, the picture you, that you, you're looking at now is the one that's attached in the drawing.
Okay.
They're gonna be here, there, there, and there. Oops, sorry.
And they only raise a foot or two, or move a foot or two from the porch rail?
They have a keeper that is attached to the top of the porch railing that holds them out.
Okay.
And it's, I think of it like a giant, really long screen door hook, because you've got to...
Yeah.
...windup and get it, and jerk them up further, so it's there to hold them down.
Whoops.
Did we lose our video?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, who kicked the, who kicked the cable?
Oh.
What other questions? Did you, did you get the answer you were hoping for?
Yes.
What are the questions the folks have?
I don't have any.
Is there any, I mean, I don't have any concerns, I'll just point out that that's the first time we've allowed shutters that are hinged at the top, that I'm aware of. To me, they, they can be undone, removed quite easily.
Mm-hmm.
It's not a major structural change to the building.
And you'll be able to see them only from university?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have a problem with them.
The fact that they will probably be closed a lot of the time because he is a pilot...
I'm sure they'll be closed.
They'll be closed, probably ninety percent of the time.
And that area is not screened down there, correct?
It's not screened. The, if you'll see the steps that come up to the short end, that's open, it's not insect screened or anything like that, so it's just, it's more of a privacy thing, I would think.
Yeah, it's just a little...
A little something to where...
Updating, hide some of that, it's...
Yeah.
I'm so slumming. I'll get protection, too.
If there are not any further questions, the chair would welcome a motion.
I move to approve as submitted.
Is there a second? We have a second? Thank you, Deborah. Any further discussion?
I would just wanna, Steve, let Mr. Stone know that we appreciate him being in the neighborhood, and we appreciate what he's doing to this property.
He's looking forward to being there. Thank you.
Although, we need to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Then the motion carries, thank you very much. Joe, is there anything else?
I have nothing.
We do have a guest in the audience, did you have anything you wanted to add? Okay. If there's nothing else...
Mr. Chairman, one quick thing.
Go for it.
You know, last meeting or the meeting before, we talked about the Airbnb situation. Well, in front of that house now, we have a for rent sign, which is in the city right-of-way, which I don't believe is the proper place to put signs to begin with, and it's been up a long time, and I know there is a period of time when for rent signs are supposed to be up, and I think possibly we've passed that, so I don't know if Mr. Renalis is listening to me, but we need to have somebody in the city follow up on that.
Refresh us, David, where is that property?
It's the, is that still the 500 block, or it's a 600 block, isn't it?
It says a long-term, for rent, long-term rental, I think? Yeah, it's been there for a while.
I think it's 500.
It's the 500 block, it's just prior to the church.
Oh, okay.
On this side of the church.
To the, to the west of the church.
Correct.
Yes.
On the south side of Main Street.
Right.
Yes, okay.
I saw the sign coming in this morning, it's like it says executive short-term rental.
Right.
That was it, yeah, something in front of the...
But from my understanding, there's not supposed to be any signs in the city right-of-way, and that's where it's at. And secondly, there, for rent signs are, are not to be permanent, from what I understand.
You're right.
And it's, I don't know how long it's been up, but it's been quite a while.
I just saw it today, for the first time, but I will pass it along.
It's, it's probably been up at least three months.
Almost as long as the campaign.
So, can you follow up on that, David? Okay.
I will, yes, absolutely.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Anything else from anyone? If not, the chair would welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
If they were seconded, so we are adjourned.